Long run should we move back to this new center? And has it been done on fire for months like that, or is it? Yeah. Cars, I'm told, yes. I mean, I don't know for sure. I didn't do either walk through the same thing, but yeah, I've done something like that.
Did you watch the whole video?
Yeah.
Brandon, who shoots at taxes, like, this whole election. Yes. You're so bad with the dog. Sure.
No, of course not. So, I'm looking at the agenda just in line. Yeah. Speaker, does he? Sure, it's quick. Yeah. All right, so I'll just, yeah, let me start. We can't see what's on the agenda here. Now, if you're, hey, that was, uh, hold on, please, I should put it on.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the workshop meeting agenda for the Aberdeen Township Council. This meeting will be held with the performance by the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice, community, newspaper is a record and hosted in municipal building and filed with the township clerk. The next open public meeting of the township council will be held on Thursday, December seventeenth, at seven thirty P. M. Call please.
Councilman Hahn.
Here.
Councilman Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Here.
Councilman Martucci.
Here.
Councilwoman Swedell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Montal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Manager, would you like to represent the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to put on record that our township attorney, Jimmy Classic, is right now on speakerphone, and he's on his way, he's just stuck in traffic. He will be here. I'm gonna go over the agenda first, and then if everyone's doing it, I'm just gonna go over the annual report and submit that to everyone, so I can release that tomorrow. First off, sorry, I've got a little time, different things here, so just trying to check everything right. First off, we've got our bond organs number six dash twenty twenty-five, and that'll be for introductions, and that is for general capital improvements. And just so everyone has an idea, we're looking after that this year. This is for road reconstruction and other road improvements to various roads, including but not limited Interway, Shore Concourse, Deerfield Lane, and Darwin Way. Milling and paving of other road improvements to various roads, including but not limited Gordon Street and Juniper Place, and other further, and other further, including all working materials. Road reconstruction and other road improvements to Irongate Lane. We have bank on for capital for South River Metal and the Strathmore Projects for the LSRP rehabilitations. Installation of the electric vehicle charging stations, include all work and materials. The land preservation at Sanaha Farms, yes, that's finally coming to, uh, say, uh, with the county, uh, the Sanaha Farm family, and the Monmouth County Conservation Preservation. Parks and playgrounds. We have improvements to Cambridge Park, Adjusted Park, including all working materials necessary thereof. The acquisition of external defibrillators, including related to the costs. Equipment for Department of Public Works and buildings and grounds, not limited to doors, electrical improvements, plumbing, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements, and renovations and further, including all work. The acquisition of a truck, including all related costs in the police department. The acquisition of a drone, including a related cost. Acquisition of police cars, acquisition of evidence lockers, acquisition of various equipment, including but not limited to tethers and body armor. Office of Emergency Management is a cost of power stretcher for our Madamon Avenue ambulance corps and administration. The acquisition of equipment, including but not limited to furniture, couches, chairs, desks, scanners, and computers, which is our usual every year request to keep the township moving, or offices moving. Then we have bond organs seven dash twenty twenty-five. Uh, sorry, I had one. Uh, which is the water bond organs. And on that one, again, those things are, are straight as usual from the past years. Replacements of mains on various roads, including but not limited to Irongate Lane, Interway, and Shore Concourse. The acquisition of hydrants, valves, and batteries. The acquisition of water meters and metering interface units. Repairs to the water main breaks, those are, that's where we have the emergency breaks that are not prepared for, but this we do have a budget. Rehabilitation of buildings and grounds of the Jersey Avenue Plant Facility. And acquisition of truck body. And the last is organs eight dash twenty twenty-five, which is for sewer capital improvements. And again, on this one, most of them are routine and normal. Replacement mains on various roads, including but not limited to Irongate Lane, Interway, and Shore Concourse. Line rehabilitation, including all work and materials necessary thereof. Pump replacements, including all work and materials necessary, and the acquisition of a truck, including all related costs. So those are our three bond organs, that'll be on our introduction. After that, for consent agenda, again, long process that we're finally coming to agreements. Resolution fifty-three and fifty-four, applications for a license for cannabis retail facilities. Again, these resolutions are for support resolution and letters for the businesses to go to the CRC for approval of a license. One is to NJ Leaf Aberdeen LLC, and another for property on Route thirty-five. And resolution fifty-four is for breakwater treatment and wellness, and that located at three thirty Lloyd Road. Both businesses are freestanding buildings. Actually, both are going to be new buildings and renovated buildings. And all, and all contingent on being approved by the CRC. They have sent in their applications, has been reviewed by my office and legal, and to be found on all compliance. And if approved tonight, then we'll send the resolution and the letter of approval to the CRC with the license applications. And then we do have one, uh, okay, sorry. And then we do have resolution fifty-five, which is a resolution for disabled veteran tax exemption. And resolution twenty-six is the approval for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Employee Manual. Again, that's basically our normal every two years, the employee manual. And lastly, we'll have one, uh, raffle license for BFW Booksport seven five. I will need an executive session for this evening for litigation, contractual, and personnel. And first I'll ask for any questions on the actual agenda before I go into the report. Anyone on the side? Anyone on the side?
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna try to go through this, I know we do this every year. And I actually wanna give a thank you to the folks of my directors in the room tonight. But again, I want to do, this, I want to submit, and it'll be released tomorrow morning, the twenty twenty-four Annual Report. Today I submit to you the twenty twenty-four Annual Report. Five years ago, we had goals for the township of the COVID, those goals were shelved. And over the next four years, they've grown and improved better. I first want to thank Mayor Council for giving me the respect and confidence to lead this administration as the chief executive and help continue to make progress. Over the past year, our police department has continued to safeguard our township. They've handled fifteen thousand eight hundred seventy-five calls of service with forty-three sworn officers and two Class Two Special Officers. Twenty twenty-four also saw the retirement of two longtime officers who together had fifty-plus years of experience and a longtime clerk. However, we've also saw the addition of two SLEO, two officers, and a new clerk in the position. The Department of Community Engagement efforts, like Coffee for the Cop and our Arrival Live program, to name a few. These community engagement programs have served as a bridge to connect the Aberdeen Police Department to our community. The Township Recreation Department never sleeps, as they continue with over two hundred and ten programs and running one hundred and ninety-one with a ninety percent success rate. We had a total of four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five participants in these programs in twenty twenty-four, with the participants ranging from children to adult and seniors. Some of our programs included Lunch with the Lawyer, Gaga Pits, Girls' Basketball Skills, Drills, and of course, the Aberdeen Lucky Leprechaun, Have You Seen Finney? The community and senior centers offer so many activities, from Cheer Deal Bit to Bridge Love. And let's not forget our summer concert series, July Four Celebrations, and the Easter Icon. New in twenty twenty-four, with our Recreation Department from our Recreation Department, we introduced the Veterans Day Breakfast and Jazz in the Park. The parks this past year were an awakening with Northland Park getting a whole reconstruction with the addition of six pickleball courts, a new basketball court, and new improved playstations. This park was partially funded by a three hundred and forty-three thousand open space grant and a forty-nine thousand community champions playground ready to help with the eighty-eight portions of the playstations. Also in twenty twenty-four, we completed significant power and infrastructure upgrades at Cambridge Park with additional lighting and more to come. And Oak Shakes Park also secured a four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar open space grant for planned improvements of the new storage and snack building with bathrooms. The Department of Public Works was and continues to be hard at work with the township's infrastructure, with nearly two million spent on road safety. Twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty linear feet of roadway improvements were completed for handover, Phase One reconstruction and repaving of Arlington Avenue. Additionally, the Sanlon Place reconstruction was completed with new infrastructure upgrades, including new curbs and cycle, and new road services. The Department of Planning and Zoning has been busy this, uh, this busy in twenty twenty-four. This office deals with plans, licenses, and handles both Aberdeen and Madamon construction and code departments. With three thousand two hundred and ninety-seven inspections in Aberdeen alone, and collecting seven hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars in fees, and two hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine from Madamon, for a total of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand two sixty-four. The Housing Division issued seven hundred and thirty-two certificates for resale and collected a hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and fifty in fees. Businesses were also authorized and reissued thirty-six new business certificates, generating four hundred and thirty, four thousand three hundred dollars. Also, our code enforcement officer responded to four hundred and twenty incidents in Aberdeen alone. In twenty twenty-four, the Finance Office oversees the township's funds. We're busy with a ninety-nine point four six percent tax collection, an all-time high. And our CFO worked with our banks to secure new interest rates, resulting in higher revenues across all funds. In twenty twenty-four, the township received about one point two million grant funds for projects and programs. Our Municipal Clerks Office handles everything from issuing licenses to responding to offers. This past year, they handled three hundred local requests, issued a hundred and sixty-seven marriage licenses, and five hundred and seventy-eight alcohol licenses, ten cat licenses, and eighty-four food handlers licenses. All of this alongside the regular operations of council agendas, minutes, and resolutions. Finishing with our Municipal Clerk, who has a shared service between Aberdeen and Madamon, processed a total of two hundred and forty-nine complaints, four thousand and forty tickets in Aberdeen, and in Madamon, they handled a hundred and thirty-two complaints and one thousand nine hundred and seventeen tickets. As you can see, twenty twenty-four is a busy year, and not only with standard programs we're offering, but we also brought in state services with two mobile NBC visits to Tampa, and which vividly helped our residents with motor vehicle services and our traditional motor drive. I know, I also now want to thank my department heads here tonight. Without having them to implement these programs and seeing our vision, I don't believe we would be where we are today. They along with their staffs are tirelessly night and day, and on weekends, to make sure the services are rendered to our residents, so I can't thank all of you enough for all your hard work and dedication. As you continue with twenty twenty-five, you will see that we are already moving forward with our roads and parks programs and all around services to the township for the betterment of our community. So again, I submit to you tonight, twenty twenty-four Annual Report. Are there any questions?
Well, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, again.
You still want to do the twenty-five?
We're running out.
I know that.
Um, I do have, I just, for a quick short time, um, again, you guys have asked to try to make sure that we have programs and help residents out with the taxes and the different programs from the state. So I might ask Marie, if you could just come up real quick and go over a program that we are having made. But I just wanted to get it out today, and we're gonna start promoting this, um, about the different tax programs around, so Marie, if you don't mind.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. I'm Marie Taylor, I'm the tax collector and the utility collector. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. With coordination with the state, they are, are, well, I'm sure you've heard, but they're with the state, the new state of New Jersey program. There's a combined application this year for the seniors. So it's a little overwhelming and a little confusing for them. The state is going to be going all over the, all over the, all, all, all the counties, all the municipalities they can get to do these information sessions to help the residents. So they're starting out with information sessions, there's going to be filing events later on to actually help residents who can't file. I'm sure you're aware, most of the seniors don't, aren't great with computers.
This is state New Jersey.
This is all of them. It's one application now for all of them, which is a good thing, it's a good thing. But they're very used to what they're used to. They're used to coming in, they're used to me helping them, the state doesn't want me to help them right now because the application's different. It's, it's, it's overwhelming a lot of them. It's overwhelming me a little bit when I'm reading through it, it's very confusing. There's already a mistake in the book that they're trying to address. I got my books today, but we are gonna do this session, they're gonna go through the whole book, they're gonna have answers, they're going to... I don't want to overwhelm you with all the information, I have packets to give you that explains everything, because it's a lot. But it's a work in progress, is the best I can say. But in the long run, it's gonna be better for our seniors, because they're not gonna have to deal with three different, three different sets of applications. The one that's the anchor was the one where they had to call on the phone. That's not gonna, they don't have to do that anymore, they don't have to get their taxes certified by our office anymore. If they do it online, they can get direct deposit, which was a new thing too. You never used to be able to file for property tax relief online, now you can. So they, they did everything they needed to do, but it's just getting it out and getting it rolling. So we're doing everything we can, have a lot of paperwork to push out. I have some flyers out already, John Walsh has been helping me. We're getting ready to launch it, social media, hopefully, and the website, but we just wanted to make the council aware, because I know that you talk to people every day. So if you could help me push this out to the public, about this session at the community center, I would really appreciate it, because I think a lot of the seniors are gonna need help with this application. I really do, it's a little overwhelming. Okay?
Do you have a date for that?
Yeah, we have it scheduled, the state schedules it. John is taking registration, because we only can hold, I think, like, a hundred and twenty, John?
Wherever you are, if he's here.
So he's, we set the flyer that they can call him, and he's gonna take their names and register. And then if we don't reach capacity, obviously, we'll let people walk in.
Okay.
And there'll be more sessions. They can actually even go to the freehold office now if they want help filing, and the state will help them file them, have the seniors, so they don't want to drive to freehold.
John's returned.
Yeah, John's helping, wait, these are the flyers.
Perfect, thank you.
And I have more stuff I can give you afterwards, but the flyers are what we're trying to push right now, just to get the residents to come, so they can ask their questions, the state can go through the application with them, tell them what they need, what they don't need. In the long run, it's gonna be a really good thing, it's just change, you know? It's changing something that people have been doing for a long time, and they're used to doing a certain way, so, okay?
Just again, for the state of New Jersey Information Session on May eighth, twenty twenty-five, from two thirty to four P. M. at the Sigasmande Community Center.
Right.
So again, and Recreation working with us to push out to our senior groups and to the senior board, so they can get everything out.
Does anyone have any specific questions regarding the program, and might be able to answer it? I can try.
I'll be there.
I'm gonna learn a lot at the session, too.
It's longer than I would get.
I have a lot of questions for them when I get there, but...
I don't know enough to ask a question yet.
Yeah, that's a big part of the reason why I'm going, too. Brian can tell you, the seniors come in all the time, I have to sit out in the hallway with them. So I have, I don't wanna help them fill out an application and make a mistake, so that, it's a good thing that we're having this session, so that we can make sure they get their applications in right the first time, you know?
The best thing I heard is we don't all have to see you, but that's sort of like, it acts, right? Is that up to me?
Yeah, no, you don't have to get it certified anymore. Um, there's a bunch of changes that are really, really good with the changes they made, it's just getting it rolling is, is the hard part. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And then one last thing, just a reminder, this Thursday, next Thursday, yes, April tenth, from five thirty to seven thirty, is the annual Easter Icon at Veterans Memorial Field, so Memorial Park. Uh, so please come on, make sure you come out for that evening, it's a little different, it's a weeknight. And, uh, and order register online, uh, on the Recreation site.
What was the issue?
Uh, next Thursday, April tenth, five thirty to seven thirty, if you break it down into different acres. So it is online, and, uh, we do have flyers out too, that have the time, so there's acres. Uh, Mayor, I have nothing else for, see if any of our department heads, if anyone needs to ask a question to the department head, if not, um, I'm completely...
Okay, and before returning to the regular meeting, I'll just ask one more time, if I have any questions from the manager on anything that occurred so far today, or department managers. I'm not seeing any more than what, take a motion to go into the regular meeting, please?
I'll make that a motion.
Second? All fair and...
All right.
All right. Good, welcome to the regular meeting agenda. Aberdeen Township Council, Thursday, April third, twenty twenty-five. This meeting is being held with the performance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice, we give it to the newspaper record, posted in the municipal building and filed with the township clerk. The next open public meeting of this council will be held on Thursday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty P. M. Call please.
Councilman Hahn.
Here.
Councilman Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Here.
Councilman Martucci.
Here.
Councilwoman Swedell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Montal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you very much. Please rise from all the silence, and the students are ready to play. And, um, this morning, I received a call from one of our fire commissioners, Connor Caruso, to inform us that a member of our family has passed away. And this gentleman was a fireman, member of the Clifford Volunteer Fire Company, served over fifty-four years, and served within the Moley Offices as well. And served as chief and a local fire inspector. He has also worked for the Aberdeen Township Road Department. I am referencing, referencing Andy Boras. So what I'd like very much to do, I had invited Mr. Caruso to come here, the speaker of his friend, but tonight happens to be the service of Andy. So let's all keep Andy in our hearts, and also traditionally, let's keep in mind all the men and women in uniform who protect us on our soil here and foreign soils to allow us to meet in forms like this. And I allow you for any personal intentions you might have.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's Mr. Andy. So now we're gonna open up to the hearing of the citizens on the agenda items. Only the meeting have been larger preparers tonight, and if I'd like to come and ask any questions on agenda items, please do so, or just give me a shooting address.
Uh, Mark, I shot to forty-five Seventeenth Street. So the issuance of these bonds, that's us borrowing money, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I didn't have a chance to read through where all the money's going, but based on what you said and when I did scan through, I mean, there's nothing in there that I would say we shouldn't spend money on. But it does seem like a lot of money, like eleven and a half million dollars. So I'm just curious how that's gonna affect the debt service payments, because I believe currently they're at about four million dollars.
And have to get back to Monica to see if those actually not here tonight, and he can actually give you the veteran's, or give you a breakdown on the actual debt and how the service, I mean, everything that is on here for, right now, has been budgeted for. The payments have been budgeted for, so, and again, there's nothing between our auditors and CFO and bond counsel that saw anything that would be any irregularities for making sure that everything is paid on time, which would never miss a payment or anything. But I'm, I'm actual breakdown, sorry, I have to have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, I kind of figured that, I did have another question, but I think I'm gonna get to see the answer too, so that's fine, we can come back next time. I did notice, so we're borrowing like three point three million between the water and sewer, but we moved two point nine million from the sewer into the municipal budget. So I was just curious why that would be? Like, if we needed the three million dollars for the sewer, why wouldn't we keep it there?
Sorry, I'll leave that.
That's fine, they're kind of... I figured that these are questions for Joe, so when I didn't see him, I'm like...
Yeah, he's, he's out, uh, he actually just, like, got married over the weekend, and...
Oh, congratulations.
Um, I was actually allowed to call him up until today, and then he's in after that, he's turning his phone off, he's out of country.
Oh, good on him.
So I will, I, I, I got everything on the table, and I just have to touch base with you when he's back.
All right, great.
Exactly.
Um, yeah, I think that's it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have one tonight, and ask for any questions on the agenda items?
How you guys doing? William Rivera, uh, seven fifteen Primrose Lane, Clifford Beach, former. Uh, I just got a question, um, I came here a couple of years ago. I asked you guys about possibility of opening up a retail cannabis dispensary. I've been in contact with a couple of you guys, I know you guys personally. I have a business in Madawan on Route thirty-four, we've been denied two times already through the borough of Madawan for a cannabis retail business. I've been in contact numerous times trying to get an operating, trying to operate, I'm from Cliffwood. Um, I grew up in Madawan, I played for Mr. Martucci, I went to school with him. Uh, this cannabis program that has been rolled out is for entrepreneurs like myself. I was in Cliffwood, I was locked up in Cliffwood, I went to prison, I came out, I redid my life, I'm a better person, as Mr. Martucci knows. I graduated from colleges, I opened up three businesses, I opened, I have a functioning dispensary in English Town already. Um, what was the process of you guys just allowing two of the biggest dispensaries and companies to just come in here a month after you guys allowed dispensaries to come in here, to have a place, everything ready to go? And they're ready, without due diligence, without little guys being able to throw their hat in the ring? I'm in the town right now where there's four dispensaries, and this, the town is point six square miles. I'm the littlest guy there, we're doing the best. I, you know, I'm from this town, I feel like this, I'm a minority in the town, like, it should have been at least an opportunity for me to throw my hat in the ring, to compete with the big businesses that you guys already signed, sealed, and delivered. Just would like to know what the process was, was it competitive? How, how come, you know, I've been in contact with you guys, why nobody ever said, there's an opportunity? Let this little guy come in here, I'm from these streets, I know what goes on in these streets, I can help kids in these streets. These MSOs don't know these kids in these streets. I know them, I'm from here. Why wouldn't I have an opportunity to come in here and represent my business that I built from scratch? Just would like to know what the problem was, what I did wrong, or what was done wrong?
Um, so Mr. Her, until actually your email earlier today, I didn't even remember that you were here two years ago.
Oh, oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, right. Uh, and that's why, you know, I was trying to put something together, the two companies that we did meet with, we actually, we did do our due diligence with them, we actually visited their operations to make sure it's something that we would want here. Um, again, as I stated earlier, just because the council, if they vote to approve letters of support for them, it doesn't mean that they're going to be approved, it has to go through the CRC. So if they don't, they have to go back and do this again.
With all due respect, you're talking about the two biggest companies in New Jersey, they're, once you give them the resolution, the opportunity for anybody like myself is over with.
Until I get a letter sent that they're approved, I, I can't, you know, I can't do anything with that. You know, the township, when they approved the licenses minus retail, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two at this point, um, you know, they, they voted on everything but retail.
Agreed.
Okay, they wanted to see how everything was gonna work in the state, and that we've been monitoring, we've been following... Okay, they wanted to see how everything was going to work in the state and, you know, we've been monitoring, we've been following up on everything. Um, and then to, you know, in the past month, we have, we've, you know, council has agreed to try two licenses. Doesn't mean that if that works out and they wanted to open up more licenses, there, there would be, there could be more. But right now we're only doing two and trying in two different locations. Um, you know, again, I told you I would be able to go on Monday to get some more of your, your, uh, your side. Again, I'll tell you, I'll tell you right from me, I don't remember until, you know, we sent the email, but yes, you were here a couple of years ago, I think with your mom or another relative or something at that time. Um, the other companies, you know, I, I probably had six companies or seven companies reach out to us. Um, one of the things that we kind of get to hear everybody is that we want, you know, the rest of the businesses to be in freestanding buildings. Some businesses have come to us, they have not, they are, you know, they're either going to, they're going to be in a strip mall or in a small business area, um, and, you know, some of our property managers did not want to see that. So one of the things, if a business could not produce, at least to show that they're looking for a freestanding, uh, facility, then we really told them that, or at least through my office, that we probably wouldn't be, you know, interested in that kind of facility. Uh, but again, I'm willing to communicate with you on Monday, I have a meeting Monday morning for you to go over with me, um, some of your plans. And again, you know, I will bring it back again.
With all due respect though, um, if, again, if those two licenses are already, resolutions are already given, there's no, I mean, there's really no opportunity for me. Right? Like that's the ultimate end reality is, once those resolutions go out, unless you guys say we're going to allow more in a year or whatever it is, my opportunity to be in, open in the town where I grew up in, where I caught my charges in, is gone. Like, I respect that you guys went to the facility, but I was in contact with you guys, why didn't you come to my facility to see how we operate? I'm, I'm from this town, like, why, you could have came to me and, and I would have showed you my whole operation and showed you that you don't need to be a big, huge company with all these hedge funds behind you guys to have all this, right? Like, you can have a small guy come in here and compete with the big guys and give, I'm going to give more opportunity to people like me and, and, and other people like myself that caught, that are caught up in this, in, in Clifford, in Clifford Beach, than the MSOs or the guys that you hired, that you guys are going to go to bed with. Like, they ain't going to come and, they're not going to do anything for the people in Clifford. Like, you can't honestly think that. Like, you, you, I, I contacted you guys several times. I'm in Madawan, I've been denied two times in three years. I'm trying to help Aberdeen and people in my, you know, who've been caught up with the same thing I've been, and it's nothing but a roadblock. All I'm saying is, you guys approved it about a month ago, and now you guys got two of the biggest companies lined up, ready to go with spots, everything's done, signed, sealed and delivered. What was the due diligence of other companies allowing to put their application into throw their hat in the ring? That's all I'm asking.
My, my, I can't be in Madawan, is it not Madawan?
I, I totally understand.
You should talk to them.
I, I really can't, the person who controls Madawan is, is on the board here, so I have no.
Well, well, I can tell you is that, most of the companies that came to visit with us, I met with them, I went over what they would be presenting to us, and if it was something that was able to present to what we needed in town, and they were going to be a freestanding building, then we offered them an application to apply, which I accepted back on April first.
Okay, so I'm just, they just had the contact directly to get an application in private to get, to get an application from you?
Backpack companies called it crazy, asking about coming here. Actually, I had two companies today alone ask if there would be any more licenses opening up.
Because it was published that you guys were going to have a meeting tonight and the two were already gone, that's why it's like now at the end of the, the rope. And I understand, I guess I have to go with you on Monday, but if this goes through, the two licenses are completely gone anyway, so you have to be an additional added on, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else have to come up this evening, or change their orders?
Yeah, Mark Bishop, two forty-five Center Street. I just want to ask what the process was, uh, for the applicants of the marijuana shops? Because when that resolution got passed, I asked if there was any contact with any shops or if there was anything that was set to open, and you said no. And that's a pretty quick turnaround, and I think that that's a concern that this gentleman has over here, is it sounds almost, it, the timeline seems so short that it seems reasonable to assume that there was conversations before the resolution was introduced initially.
There's been people calling us for years. And again, unless they were able to show that they could do it in a, um, thank you, I can't remember, uh, freestanding facility, then we were not entertaining. Uh, these people have been, they've been reaching out a bunch of times, and once everything was working here, that we wanted to move forward with it. I did notify the council that we were looking at these two companies, and they sent all their stuff in, their applications, I, we sent out, um, late last week and said if they were interested, then to put through, because, you know, I didn't want to lose that to anybody else. And again, if they didn't want to apply, then we would go to another company and see if they wanted to go through. But I mean, I've had lobbyists call our town and ask if we were willing to have people, uh, interested, and again, we gave the same, the same conversations. And I told them even to that, keep, you know, we will keep it, keep your list or keep calling out to us. If the council wants to open up more licenses, that's, you know, their purview, not mine, uh, I will just facilitate at the end of it.
So the criteria is quality of land.
What's that?
The council said we don't, we don't want this next to the hobby shop, we don't want it next to Vita, we don't want it next to Sprouts, we don't want it in the empty shopping center, Clifford Avenue thirty-five, that's already a disaster, right? So the criteria that the council set out, look for these resolutions to support, was people that can afford to put it in a freestanding building, which turns out to be really just bigger operators, that has been found, everyone else I called, I want to put it in some empty spot. Uh, and we want to make sure that they have the resources, to have the security and owner control, and to build a new building that has all those things, not retrofit something else, like is happening in other towns, and, and is right across the border from us. So the nature of where it is isn't really relevant, you know, at least from our perspective beyond, we want to maintain the beautiful shopping place.
So that, that's not the, that's not the question, and I appreciate what I told.
We were researching these two companies, Breakwater and NJLE, are two of the largest operators in the state. Then we went to other places, into other towns, to see how they were affecting the neighborhoods and the people.
So when, when did you go to their facilities and for what period of time did you research them?
Uh, we were there only five months.
But I just want to say something.
But, but the point is, is that we, we were doing this in a way.
No, but I'm, but that's a pretty direct question, like, when did you go to their facility and when did you start researching?
So you have to understand, when this first started to happen, right? Uh, and the vote was to go the way out, whether or not to legalize it. We're seven people of seven things, right? Some of us are for, some of us are against, we're all all over the place. We took, we did what we thought was comfortable in the beginning, and we ran with everything but retail, because we weren't sure what was that, you know, what is that going to look like in our town, okay? Then when we saw what was happening and, you know, the tax money you can bring in and the revenue and blah, 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 then we were saying, some of us, I want to see what this looks like somewhere else. We had, we weren't even sure if we were going to do it here, but I want to explore. So we did explore, and we went out to big places that we thought would give us, because it was very important to some of us, how clean it looked, you know, does it smell, I mean, all of the crazy things that were in our heads. So this isn't an overnight process anyway, so we didn't even know if we were going to do it. We've been exploring to see if it looked like something we might have been entertaining. So I don't want you to think that, you know, we went out to these places, it was fixed, and we knew what we were doing, we didn't. You know, we, we only changed everything when we started to feel comfortable that we might have allowed this to happen.
I can understand that, but it's, but it sounds like, it sounds like what made you comfortable was spending time with these two specific companies. And if I'm understanding this correctly, this gentleman over here, I didn't catch your name, has, has.
It wasn't just you.
You guys, just, right, you want to make sure that there was air filtration, that there was financial.
It's not just that, let me, let me explain to you, you have the whole context, because you just heard someone complain that the process wasn't fair.
Okay, let me, can I ask my question, please, first?
Sure. Do you know the answer, or is it?
Yeah, so, so what I heard was that you needed to make sure that they were financially capable of having a standalone building, that they could renovate that building, the building would be beautiful, that there was, um, air filtration systems and all of that. Did any of you ever ask this gentleman for that information? Did you ever review this finance, this, this man's finances? Do you know how much this man is worth? Do you know if he's capable of doing those things? Because if not, I don't think the, I, I had no problem with you guys voting on this today until I just heard that, can I tell you? Like, I criticized you, you guys for this in the past, which I'm sure that you're thrilled about. But when we have these vacancies, I think that it would be nice to have an effort to get some small businesses from residents in our own town to fill these places, and not just reach out to the Starbucks and the Sprouts and the Lord's Corporation. Like, I'm an entrepreneur myself, and I've come from a similar story from what this man is, is telling, and that really resonates with me. And he's doing his best, it sounds like, to better his life and better his community and build a life where he grew up. And I feel like if he's been reaching out to you guys, if you didn't check out his financials, did anybody visit his facility? It doesn't sound like you guys gave him a fair shot then. That's all that I'm saying, is maybe put a pause on it and see if you can give the guy a chance.
Honestly, I'm trying to give you the context, so you don't file, I know I didn't champion of whatever reason, because I'm just going to have you, and I'm trying to help you have context.
Okay.
So, and I don't want to discuss this through various individual circumstances, he actually described a few of them here. Um, so I don't want to get into that, but I want to twice the same, it's beyond just going and making sure they have money or whatever, right? I, I, you know what I do for a living, I'm sitting inside the law office, right? And you know that I represent other municipalities as, as an attorney. And I've seen this process unfold, where we're going to, you know, give points to everybody and everything else. And I'm currently defending the Borough of Redmond against the lawsuit over their process by the person who didn't get their process, right? Therefore, they gave out pre-licenses, the fourth sued, and the fifth is coming, right? And then I, and they ended up with three shops on the same street as part of their competitive process. So, you know, we can talk about processes and where they land, but functionally, we're trying to do whatever's the best for the residents of Aberdeen to deal with a vice use. You can call it whatever you want, it's a liquor store, a strip club, a tattoo bar, it's a vice use. And we're not going to open up a process that randomly places vice uses in the town. And there's well-established law for doing that. In fact, you can't move a liquor license in this town unless we give you a resolution moving it. So this is not so fair, this isn't some non-pop retail business, this is a vice use. And so we thought very carefully about who's coming here, what they're, what they do, and what they are, and we're not foreclosing it to Mr. Rivera or any other local operator. But we told you that the primary reason we're doing this is for tax revenue, right? It's not because we want a bunch of vice uses in the town or to become some destination to buy cannabis. It's for, everyone else is getting money, there's going to be on thirty-four anyway, so what are we, where are we standing on the sidelines? But, and it may one day be a competitive process to open it up, depending on what the market is. But this market has existed for all of four years, and it's a vice use. And so this is the way we did it, we brought the two most reputable companies in New Jersey to come to Aberdeen. And perhaps it wasn't fair to people like Mr. Rivera, but that's our prerogative up here as the council, that's what we all elected to do, to make the tough decisions where some people are going to be unhappy.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound like it's tough.
And then you're yelling at me because that was the competitive process, maybe it was in Madhouse.
I'm not yelling at you.
Maybe, maybe someone wanted to put it in there, right? So what, that was the process we went through, we got the two most reputable and, and, and well-managed operators in New Jersey to come here and generate tax revenue for our town. We made sure that they could only put it in a standalone building that's not near any other children's, the hobby shops, some things, nothing in our commercial district, which is the only thing that we have to protect here, because we don't have the main street. And that's the way we did it. And I'm sorry that Mr. Rivera is upset, I'm sorry that you think it's been unjustly done, but that's the way we did it. And we're not foreclosing the future to do it differently. But for right now, and the way this exists for a vice use, to just open it up to a competitive process was not how we did it. And your action wasn't fair, but that's the way it is. And, but there's a lot of liquor license holders that say, we don't want them to move their, their licenses around either, they say it's wildly unfair. At one point, there was an ordinance in this town that you couldn't move on within a half mile of another one. And we had to vote people down, people told us that wasn't fair, so we made it two hundred and fifty feet. So these things are not set in stone today, but today, we don't have enough information to open up some competitive process to put it wherever you might land. That's not going to happen, that's not, I don't think that's why people elected us, to just randomly place vice uses around the town. And if you go to the towns that have them, they got, they got some issues. So, you know, we have either lawsuits, or three on the same street, or you are just four in English Town, right? So, you know, is that what we want here, lots more on the same street in English Town, a point six miles? Because they did a fair, completely fair legal process. You know, so there's a lot of ways this can land, but only the full context of the reading you're dealing with. We're not talking about a retail shop or some vendor, we're talking about a vice use. And so we treated it very, very carefully, and we got the most reputable and, and the people that we think will generate the most tax revenue for the people of Aberdeen in a place that won't bother any money. And that, and I think that sums it up, I don't know if there's anything to add, but that's, that was the decision-making process, for better or for worse, you can judge it no longer, it is.
Okay, so, I mean, like you said, I do know what you do for a living, and as a land use attorney, you would know better than anybody that the zoning laws would dictate the placement of these buildings, that has to be standalone, and all the other issues that you're saying that this man wouldn't have been able to accomplish. My only question here, my only question here is, from what you just said, it sounds like you have a lot of experience in a lot of different municipalities across the state, and that you have a history, and that you have, know that these two dispensaries operate well, in your opinion? So you wanted them here, and you did not give anybody else an opportunity to, to, to be vetted, to see if they met your criteria of what was acceptable and what was not?
I asked other cannabis attorneys who represent applicants, right? So like the lower side of the coin, every municipality, and they represent the applicants. I asked them, who are the best operators and the most reliable of the best places in the state of New Jersey, and the, the best for Aberdeen? And they gave us like four or five names, and we narrowed it out to those two, after visiting a bunch of them.
Okay, so then the answer was, that, that's all I didn't want to deal about it, was you wanted to ask around and see who the best was? Anybody, any little guy, anybody from town, there, anybody that wasn't recommended to you was never going to be considered?
First of all, you stop.
I'm, I'm asking you.
You stop politicking, let us get on to the rest of the meeting, because that's what you're doing.
This is not what I'm.
And I know, well, I know I feel bad for them, and I'm sorry it didn't work out right now, well, but the bottom line is, you're sitting here politicking, you've got the answers, listen to what people are telling you, sit down, and let us finish, go into the meeting. Thank you. That's all you're doing.
It's not all, I, I wasn't going to get up here and say anything.
Come up here, politic, you question everything we do when you have no.
I'm sorry if you got to answer the residents. I, I apologize for that, and I'm sorry if I'm wasting your time, I was, I had no intention of coming up and asking about this until he asked, and I wanted to make sure and see if there was an opportunity for anybody else, and you said that there was nothing.
You were told that.
But there may be in the future.
You were told that, it was vetted. It was vetted by four or five different companies, right? And that's the way we felt about it, that's the way we went.
Let's close this out. Thank you, Mr. Fisher, and the other questions that you had are, so your vote will be back to you on, on those topics. Thank you for your comments. Again, anyone for any agenda items? One, two, three, four, okay, closed out. We're now going to do, uh, agenda item number six, I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor to give a proclamation, please.
Yes, I'm going to be reading the Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Round Proclamation. Whereas children are our nation's most valuable members and as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of New Jersey. And whereas positive childhood experiences, experiences like loving, caregiving, and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences to promote the social, emotional, and developmental being of children. And whereas children's childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. And whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the U S, and finding solutions requires an input and action from everyone. And whereas children who live in families with access to concrete, economic, and social supports are less likely to experience abusive neglect. And prevention is possible because of the partnerships created between Prevent Child Abuse New Jersey, Families, Prevention Advocates, Child Welfare Professionals, Education and Health Community, and faith-based organization, organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and local, state, national governments. And whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families to break down bias and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. And whereas we are committed to advancing equitable, responsive, and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. And whereas we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest in more prevention initiatives like home visiting and family strengthening policies, economic supports, and community-based child abuse prevention programs, and the national, state, and local levels. And therefore, on behalf of the Township Council and Mayor Fred Taggart Green, we do hereby proclaim April twenty-fourth as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the Township of Aberdeen, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families throughout collaborative and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention. Thank you.
Thank you, and it should be well-known that, uh, you certainly have put many years of your life into this.
Absolutely.
And we thank you for that very much, Deputy Mayor. We have a lot of the proclamation, um, and what comes to mind before I read this, it is Autisymis, that is one. And Deputy Mayor herself, the chief, some other folks. And Deputy Mayor, myself, the chief, some other folks, were at the Clifford School meeting on Dr. Seuss Day.
Yeah.
And I got to see something firsthand, which I had never been part of before. And they asked me to read to a special needs class. And humbling is not the word, but it's something that's going to stay with me a very long time, to see these very special children doing their best to pay attention and observe what was going on. And like I said, in all the years I was doing it, I never came across that, but I'm happy to say I did, and it was very, very special. So as whereas this month, Aberdeen joins communities around the world in recognizing ABLE as Autism Acceptance Month, we celebrate the many ways autistic individuals add to diversity and strength of our community while raising awareness to the challenges faced by children, teens, adults on the autism spectrum, living to their full potential. Whereas the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention report that 1 in 36 children may have autism in 5.7 million adults or 2.1% of the adult population at autism spectrum this quarter in the United States. Whereas autism is a neurological and developmental disorder characterized by social impairment and restricted interactive and communication games, can affect anyone regardless of race, gender, social, economic background. It is crucial to ensure that persons living with autism have access to lifelongs and supports and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness, independence and community inclusion to achieve their great potential. And whereas Aberdeen is honored to celebrate the many ways individuals with autism enhance the quality of our community and is committed to fostering acceptance and a sense of belonging as we all work together to create a more welcoming and inclusive township for all. Now, on behalf of this great council, I would like the township to write, proclaim April 2025 as Autism Acceptance Month. Thank you very much. Reports, members of council, any reports at this moment? No? Chief Lloyd, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, nothing else?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you very much. With this, we'll move on to eight, there's someone to give the motion on minutes.
To Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and fellow council members, I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting and workshop meeting of March 20th, 2025.
Set. Councilman McKenna.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Swindell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montal. Yes, I take the reading.
Yes, thank you. Can I have a motion, please, on nine A?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, my fellow councilpeople, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number six, 2025, on first reading by title and to order the same to be published by summary in the April 9th, 2025 issue of the Asbury Forum Press, together with notice of its introduction and passage on first reading by title, and that it will be further considered for final passage after public hearing at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on April 17th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m.
Set.
Bond orders providing for various capital improvements entered by the Township of Aberdeen and the County of Longford, New Jersey, appropriating $8,875,313, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $8,248,655,000. Bonds are announced as part of the cost thereof. Councilman McKenna.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Swindell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montal. Yes, I take the reading.
Yes, thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please, for nine A, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Deputy Mayor, my fellow councilmembers, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number seven, 2025, a brief reading by title and to order the same to be published by summary in the April 9th, 2025 issue of the Asbury Forum Press, together with notice of its introduction and passage on first reading by title, and that it will be further considered for final passage after a public hearing at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on April 17th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m.
Set.
Set.
Bond orders providing for various water utility improvements entered by the Township of Aberdeen and the County of Longford, New Jersey, appropriating $1,860,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,767,000, bonds announced by the Township to finance part of the cost thereof. Councilman McKenna.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Swindell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montal. Yes, I take the reading.
Yes, thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please, for C?
Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councilmembers, I would like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number eight, dash 2025, on first reading by title and to order the same to be published by summary in the April 9th, 2025 issue of the Asbury Forum Press, together with notice of its introduction and passage on first reading by title, and that it will be further considered for final passage after public hearing at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on April 17th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m.
Set. Bond orders providing for various sewer utility improvements entered by the Township of Aberdeen and the County of Longford, New Jersey, appropriating $1,580,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,501,000, bonds announced by the Township to finance part of the cost thereof. Councilman McKenna.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Swindell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montal. Yes, I take the reading.
Yes, thank you very much. And finally, I am the, yes?
Mayor, fellow councilmembers, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda, which consists of resolutions 2025, dash 53, through 2025, dash 56, and rapalisons, R1327.
Set.
Councilman McKenna.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Swindell.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Montal. Yes, I take the reading.
Yes, thank you very much. Now, up to agenda item number 10, which is a hearing of the citizens on any item. Sometimes you call it due business, whatever's on your mind, please come up and just give us your name. Okay, I see anyone come up for that. I'm gonna ask the attorney for the executive session motion.
Thank you, Mayor. After the executive session resolution, where is the open public meeting? That, overall, I think says, by, check for 231, prevents the exclusion of the party from being in certain circumstances, and whereas the upper body is of the immediate extent circumstances that simply exist, and where the governing body wishes to discuss radiation matters, snow matters and contractual matters, the minute will be kept. Unless the matter of all confidentiality of the above law requires such confidentiality, then in that case, the minutes can then be paid off. Now, therefore, your result, we will be exclusive to this meeting, I guess, the worst.
Who want to move out? Set. Okay, that, uh, my understanding that we will take no action.